Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 Pickwa City Commission Meeting. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Hines here. Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Grissom.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
And Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Okay. First thing on our consent agenda is the approval of our minutes.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. The next thing we have is old business. The first is ordinance number seven dash nineteen, and this is a third reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2020.
Ms. Holtzapple will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The 2020 appropriation as amended has some projects that are shifting for completion into 2020. So, the previous appropriation is slight, this appropriation is slightly higher by about a half a million dollars for those projects that will not be completed this year. We are required to pass the 2020 budget appropriation prior to year end, December 31st. The commission has reviewed this in detail with all departments on November 21st of this year, and passage tonight will meet all requirements.
Okay, thank you. I do know that it's an amended ordinance. It's amended, we have to make a vote.
You accept the amendment.
To accept the amendment, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the amended ordinance.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the amended ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now the ordinance is before us. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt ordinance number seven dash nineteen.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to ordinance number eight dash nineteen. This is also a third reading.
An ordinance repealing existing chapter thirty-three point oh four and thirty-three point oh eight and enacting a new chapter thirty-three point oh four and thirty-three point oh eight of the Pickwa Code relating to employee vacation and employee insurance.
Ms. Bogut will provide the staff report.
Good evening. This ordinance is before you to reflect annual routine updates required in chapter thirty-three. This is our third of three readings.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission on this ordinance? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move.
A motion to move ordinance number eight dash nineteen.
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to ordinance number nine dash nineteen. This is a first reading.
An emergency amended ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2019.
We would ask that you waive the three readings. This is the last meeting, and we have to adopt this in nineteen.
Okay.
I move we waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor of waiving the three reading rule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the three reading rule has been waived, and now the ordinance is before us. Do we have any questions from the commission? Do we have any questions from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move adopt ordinance nine dash nineteen.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to ordinance number ten dash nineteen. This also is a first reading.
An emergency ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Pickwa.
We would ask that you waive the three readings. This is about the legislation that the commission has already enacted through October 1st, 2019, and this is to be published in the Code of Ordinances by the American Legal Printing Corporation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to waive the three reading rule?
I'll make a motion to waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of waiving the three reading rule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we have waived the three reading rule, and now the ordinance stands before us. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move adopt ordinance number ten dash nineteen.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash ninety-four dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to continue city membership in American Municipal Power, Inc.
Our power director will have the staff reports. Ed will be doing six, seven, and eight.
Thank you. So after the budget is approved each year, I come to commission at the last meeting to seek legislative approval for items that we need to basically hit the ground running at the first of the year. The next three items have actually all been recommended for approval by city commission at the November Pickwa Energy Board meeting. The first two items are somewhat routine in that each year we bring them before commission. The first item is basically the authority to pay the membership dues for our membership in American Municipal Power for the coming year. And as you know, we're very involved with American Municipal Power. The majority of our power supply that we utilize to provide electric service to our customers comes through projects that we participate in with American Municipal Power, and the most recent of which are the two solar projects that were constructed in Pickwa. The last was just finished at May and year this past summer. So, we ask for approval of this legislation to allow us to pay our membership dues for 2020.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
About how much are they? It's maybe in excess of fifty thousand dollars?
Up to, the legislation is up to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is that what it was last year?
It was between seventy-two five, right in that neighborhood. It's based on the amount of sales that we have to our customers, so we budget based on projected sales for the year.
Any other questions from the commission on this resolution? Any questions from the public on this resolution?
Yes, I do.
You need to come forward and state.
Question, sir.
Ma'am.
I'll give up.
Ma'am, excuse me. You need to come forward and state your name and your address, and you can direct your questions here, so.
So kind, ma'am. Cynthia Louise Vogt. And my question, sir, if you're estimating about these prices, where are your figures? Throw the figures down, and then we'll talk about it.
We have a set standard that we use for membership.
Are you showing it right now?
The legislation asks for up to seventy-five thousand. So that's based on projected sales for the year, and the rate has basically been the same for, I believe, the last five years. So, very comfortable with this level of legislation.
No, you can't.
You can't, but you've, yeah, you've already gone once. Do we have any other questions about this resolution?
Joe Drapp, thirteen sixty-six Park Avenue. I'm here in support, I've been on the energy board for, I don't know, as long as Bill's been a commissioner, so, a long time. And I'm in support of these three items because it is critical to us to maintain our membership in this organization. Like Ed just mentioned, the bulk of our power, virtually all of our power comes through our association with this group. And over the history, we've probably been a member of AMP since the beginning, maybe? I think so. And so, our continued presence in this organization, which now has grown to a hundred and thirty-five communities, so it's grown in scope and scale ever since the beginning. And for most of that time, we have actually active participation in that board. We currently have both Ed and Bob Bowman, both serve in varying capacities in the AMP organization. And so it is, would be a terrible mistake, at least in my opinion, to discontinue that relationship, and would force us to buy our power on the spot market, which, if you were worried about rates, start buying power on the spot market. Our rates would fluctuate incredibly. And by being a member of AMP, we have not had a price increase on electricity since, I believe, twenty-fourteen. Is that the correct date? So, we're five years with no change in our electric rates. Now, I've heard a lot of people complain that their bills keep going up. Well, in the electrical factor, only if your energy use went up did your bill go up. And so, like I say, I trust this group to make the right decision and continue with this membership, recognizing that it's not cheap, but in short order, we would have regretted not spending that money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash ninety-five dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the city purchasing agent to purchase number two fuel oil on the open and spot market.
So the second item that will come to commission at this same time each year is to seek authorization to purchase number two fuel oil to use in our, the city's two combustion turbines. Over the years, we've spent and invested money in these units to increase the reliability of their operation. They're operating very well now, and they actually provide a pretty significant cost savings for our customers. Over the last seven to eight to nine years, the savings has varied from about seven to nine percent a year in cost savings. And if you look at what we pay per month for our power bill, it equates to about a month's free power for the year, so it's pretty significant. So what this allows us to do is, as the fuel oil is needed to fill the tanks either over our number eight gas turbine by the old power plant or number nine gas turbine on the north end of town, as we need fuel, we go out, check the price from a couple of different suppliers, purchase fuel, and then as needed during the summer, when we need to shave these high transmission peaks and save money, we're able to do it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
I have one question. Joe just mentioned about like buying fuel like on the spot market. Is there any alternative so that you're not having to pay fluctuating rates then?
In terms of buying fuel for these units?
Yes.
We're not able to find someone that'll lock it in, you say, for like, for a long period of time.
Right.
We don't, we've never been able to find a vendor that's willing to do that. Similar to gas prices at the gas pumps, they fluctuate, and you basically buy the fuel at the price at the given time.
Okay.
Yeah, so the two vendors you're gonna use are Mansfield and Schaefer?
Those are the two that we've been able.
Two recent ones.
Procure prices from, we used to have one or two others, but they kind of dropped out of the picture, so at least we have competing alternatives.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution number R dash ninety-five dash nineteen.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash ninety-six dash nineteen.
A resolution retaining the services of SSOE Group to provide professional consulting and engineering services for the power system.
So over the last few years, you've heard a lot about our power system high voltage circuit breaker replacement program. So we have twelve breakers that are located at three of our main substations that control the flow of bulk power in and out of the city. They're arguably the most important piece of equipment we have in the power system. And so, what we've done is, over the last two years, we've replaced three of those breakers at Pickwa Substation number five. Last year, we replaced four of those breakers at Pickwa Substation number three. Next year, we budgeted to complete the last five breakers at the substation Pickwa number four, which is right next to the power plant. So, SSOE is the engineering company that we've worked with over the last two years to provide all the engineering consulting services needed to complete these projects. We do the actual construction within-house personnel, but the engineering associated with these breaker replacements, all the new control wiring that's installed, and all the relaying, the brains of these breakers that we install, it's all provided by SSOE.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash ninety-seven dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Miami Valley Risk Management Association for the purchase of insurance.
Call on Ms. Bogut.
Good evening. This is before you to consider our renewal with Moverma for 2020. The city of Pickwa has had a longstanding relationship with this risk management pool. It's proven to be very cost effective for us, and we recommend that we continue our contract for 2020.
I should add that typically, after they close out a year, we typically get a pretty large size refund back because of safety, safety mech, measures that we've taken and so forth.
All right. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Any increases from the previous year?
Yes, we did have a slight increase this year. There was one city that was added to the, to the risk management pool. The city of Fairfield came on, so all cities experienced a slight increase of less than three percent.
Anything else? If anything from the public on this resolution? Not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution R dash ninety-seven dash nineteen.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash ninety-eight dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2019.
Ms. Holtzapple will handle the items ten through thirteen.
Thank you. The Auditor of State compliance supplement requires commission approval on any transfers for 2019. This resolution satisfies the final 2019 transfer requirement.
Okay, thank you. It said the auditor tells us we have to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, does this get us all the way to the end of nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
We're anticipating anything that might happen between now and year end.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash ninety-nine dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2020.
Likewise, we're required to set up the initial 2020 anticipated transfers as required by the auditor of state. So this satisfies the initial 2020 transfer requirement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash one hundred dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing temporary loan of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2019.
Likewise, the auditor of state requires commission approval of any temporary loans used to fund projects until approved grant or other funds are received by the city. This resolution satisfies the final 2019 requirement.
Okay, thank you.
What program was this money loaned to?
This has to do with like our CDB grants or anything that the fire or police department may anticipate, so we loan the funds from the general fund and then request the reimbursement to replenish those funds.
So then this says temporary loan, you said for grants or those, so is those already secured, that they'll be getting those to return these funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Do you have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash one oh one dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing temporary loan of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2020.
Likewise, this is requiring commission approval of temporary loans used to fund projects until approved grant funds are received, and this resolution satisfies the initial 2020 requirement so that we can move forward with those grant programs throughout 2020.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash one oh two dash nineteen.
A resolution of intent to replat several lots north of Wood Street, vacate public right-of-way, and dedicate new public right-of-way.
Mr. Smeesing will handle items fourteen through nineteen.
Thank you. This first item is simply a request for the city commission to declare their intent to entertain, a request to vacate the alley right-of-way pertaining to the subject site. The site that we're referring to here is the property that St. Mary Development will be developing the Wood Street lots on. So as part of the site preparation and preliminary design work, one of the items that needs to be addressed is the multiple individual lots that exist there today, along with the unimproved alley right-of-way that traverses through the site. Those all need to be replatted and combined into one track of land. So before that can happen, we would need to go through the proper process of vacating that public right-of-way that is not being utilized. As a result of the improvements, there'll be a modification to the alley alignment that will actually turn, the alley will turn and exit out to Wood Street as part of the improvements that'll be made.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R dash one oh three dash nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located at 111 South Main Street.
Thank you. This, this item and the next three all relate to the redevelopment activity happening on the downtown riverfront area. By authorizing this resolution, city commission would be permitting us to convey the property currently owned by the city at 111 South Main Street to the Pickwa Improvement Corporation, who serves as the conduit to be able to enable private economic development interest in these kind of scenarios. Through conversations with Pick and myself being involved, we've identified a developer who desires to redevelop the property. This is the former Mo's, as how many of us would recognize it, and they would be redeveloping it into a, I will call it a cool, fun, hip restaurant with the deck overlooking the river.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
I have a couple of questions. My name is Bill Chakwa, and Merry Christmas to you guys and Merry Christmas to the city of Pickwa. My question is, is on the next four resolutions, or the ones dealing with property, and I think a lot of people in the city of Pickwa, just like me, that just don't quite understand the transactions that are going on here, so if you guys could maybe be, explain them a little, little more in detail, so exactly what is going on here. These are properties that the city of Pickwa has purchased in anticipation of development, and then in turn, you're selling them to Pick. And then I think for the general public, maybe you guys should, you know, explain what Pick is. I know a lot of people know, but a lot of people think that your boards overlap, that the city and the Pickwa Improvement Corporation are the same people, and so you're really just transferring land between yourselves. And if that's not the case, then that's fine, too, but I think you should be, give a little more explanation of just exactly what these transfers are all about, what's the value of them, how much, I mean, you know, how much did you guys pay for these properties, and how much are you selling them for? I think that's the bottom line, so, thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you want to, oh, you, wait till.
Joe Drapp, Park Avenue again. I can't answer for all the properties, but I believe that the property at former Mo's, 111 South Main Street, that the transaction amount between the city and Pick was the exact amount of the transaction between myself and the city of Pickwa. So, I think that was a zero across the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public?
Okay, Chris, you want to summarize these projects?
Yeah, happy to. So, as referenced by Mr. Drapp, the city was working on the downtown redevelopment strategy some five years ago, and as part of that planning work, we began to understand what properties were going to be key to catalyzing the type of redevelopment activity that was desired for the riverfront. So as, as those properties became available, the city went about acquiring those properties to secure control of the property until such time development was imminent. This was one of several properties. The other three that we'll talk about were also part of those transactions that were secured, and this one was secured in the amount that Mr. Drapp referenced, which is the same amount that we're conveying it to Pick for. So the city is being made whole for the original purchase amount. Obviously, we've done some work to position the property to make it desirable for redevelopment, and virtually all of the funds expended there came by way of grant dollars through the community development block grant process, and that was the only way that you would have private sector folks take an interest in redeveloping the property. This one, along with the Zollinger property, and then the improvements at Lock Nine Park Space, were identified as the three catalytic projects that, to realize the full potential of the riverfront redevelopment activity and induce those other private sector investments that could be possible, this project, along with Zolo and the Lock Nine Park improvements, were the three that were identified as being critical to making that happen. So, here we are, as we fast forward five years later, there's been a lot of due diligence, a lot of legwork, a lot of conversations with developers and reference to our planning documents, which have been instrumental in securing the interest that we've gotten from the development community on this one and the other projects we'll talk about. But we're now at that point where we're beginning to see the, the plan visions turn into bricks and mortar and become real. So this is, this is what you worked towards all along. Fortunately for us, we've got, the Pickwa Improvement Corporation is an existing body that was long ago established under the Ohio Revised Code provisions that exist for those types of bodies to be established. And in effect, what they're there for is to facilitate these type of economic development transactions that have some involvement at the city level, but need to be facilitated at more of a private sector level. So that body is made up of business members in the community, citizens, and also city representation, but the majority of it is business members from the community. So their role is to do exactly what we're doing here, is to receive properties that may have been owned by the city, or may, they may need to play a role in helping to assemble land or. land or securing control of a property, to then in turn do the development agreement and the purchase agreement with a developer who will do exactly what it is that the, the planning and the, the strategy documents for the community identify.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we have our resolution before us. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-104-19.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located at 120 South Main Street.
Similar to the last one, this is a property that was acquired by the city. It was actually received by way of donation, so the conveyance was, fee was a dollar. Since then, we've had communications with an individual who's interested in redeveloping the property. They, the purposes for the redevelopment would be to utilize it for specialty retail. The initial inclination is that they would be doing a fresh press juicery type operation, something that fits very well with the, the vision for the downtown riverfront area. That's a, a use type that's identified specifically in the downtown redevelopment strategy. So here again, by conveying the property to the Pickwa Improvement Corporation, we're putting it in a position for Pick to be able to facilitate that transaction and be able to realize the, the vision that was identified in that planning document.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Now we have resolution number R-105-19.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located at 201 Spring Street.
So this item and the next one both relate to the, the street frontage on East Water Street from Spring moving to the east. The first track is, is the 201 Spring Street property, which is the former Bayman's used car lot. Here again, the, the city had identified this as a strategic property that was important to the type of redevelopment activity that was imagined as the Lock Nine Park improvements come online. So through conversations with various, various private sector developers, we began to understand that they saw a tremendous potential for this site to accommodate three-story walk-up townhome-type product, which is something that is missing in our current housing inventory. We, we really lack that type of product where if a person isn't interested in something in the subdivision or an older home or whatever it might be, if they're looking for something that they can, can own, but not have to mow a lot of grass or maintain a lot of property, we don't have a lot of that. So this, this addresses that need. It also results in a significant investment in the riverfront project and creates more folks living downtown, which is a good thing when we start thinking about the restaurants and the other amenities and attractions that we're looking to create in the downtown space. Here again, the transaction amount would, it would make the city whole when you consider the amount of investment the property owner will be making in preparing the site to make it redevelopable. So unlike the Mose site where we did the work upfront to make it ready for redevelopment, this one still needs substantial work in terms of demolition of existing structures, utilities to the site, and some other things like that. So when you factor all that in, the acquisition fee plus that work that would be contributed by the developer, we're coming out equal to what we paid for it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Do we get any kind of insight on, see what the, the property developments look like so to make sure that there are quality type townhomes that would be placed right there on the riverfront?
Yeah, so part of the, the, the way it would work with the Pickwa Improvement Corporation is the developer would provide a letter of intent, and with that, they would answer certain questions in terms of what is the development type and what does that product look like. And so Pick would be referring back to the, the planning documents to make sure that what they're proposing is consistent with what the community and the stakeholders had said they want to see there. So yes.
So Pick does allow us to facilitate, facilitate that to make sure that there are certain standards being set?
Those checks and balances are in place, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the pub, or from the commission? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-106-19.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located at 212 East Water Street.
This parcel is adjacent to the former Bayman's used car site, and it too was acquired to assemble with that track of land for the purposes of facilitating the, the townhome development that was previously discussed. So this property was purchased, I believe it was 29,900, so it's the same amount, I'm sorry, 29,000 even, which is the amount that the resolution is seeking authorization to convey it to Pick for. So here again, the city will be made whole.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
How many apartments are going to go in there?
So this lot would be combined with the other track of land, and I think initially he's targeting seven to eight, depending on the footprint and the floor plans they decide upon. And then there's some interest depending on how this first phase goes at looking at a future phase continuing down the block.
Does he have an estimated affordability for it? How much will it cost to rent?
You know, it, he's working through the pro forma. I know he met with several realtors in the community, understanding our market conditions. They're looking very carefully at what are the market interests and also how that relates to price point. So I don't have a specific answer for you, but I know he's very cognizant of that.
Okay.
Do you know, excuse me, do you know with the, like you said, the areas higher desirability to develop in some of those, the city's being made whole, is there any opportunities to gain profits for future reinvestments in this area?
So I think that's a slippery slope for the city. Pick, Pick is in a position to perhaps realize a small amount of revenue off of the transaction. But here again, the, the end goal is to induce the redevelopment. So our market is not such that we can be overly aggressive in what we ask for. What we really need to do is just be working to make sure we get the right types of products. So we're fortunate in that the developers we're working with all understand the planning documents and the vision that the communities put forward, and they want to deliver just that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? Do we have anything from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-107-19.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to zoning map to assign the zoning designation of parcel M40-05718, 7815 to OS Open Space upon annexation of the property.
This is the 81-acre tract that the Manure Solar Field partially occupies. The other portion of that acreage is already in the city limits, and that portion is zoned OS Open Space. Part of the discussions with the group that did the solar field development was that they would annex the portion in the county upon completion of the project. So they're following through with their commitment at this time. This is the first step in that process, is to identify the appropriate zoning for the property upon the annexation process being completed. The item's been before the planning commission. They've reviewed the comprehensive plan and our land development maps to make sure that the proposed zoning is consistent with what's projected. And they found that the OS Open Space zoning would be suitable for, for what's happening here.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Does that provide any benefits for the city in exiting that?
The zoning type?
Or just bringing that land into the city, does that provide any benefits for us?
Certainly having it inside the city limits gives us, you know, an upper hand in terms of future development activity and what it may or may not be. So much like the other four properties we just discussed, having some control by way of it being in our jurisdiction is beneficial.
I mean, one other thing to note, it was important to us, being that this solar facility was going to be interconnected to our electrical system, and our electrical system is, for the most part, located within the city. We asked Nextera to do this as part of the agreement, so we thought it was, be important to get that, the rest of the property into the city as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission on this resolution? Do we have anything from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move with resolution R-107-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-108-19.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the trustees of Spring Creek Township to furnish emergency ambulance service and fire protection.
Our fire chief will provide the next two items.
Thank you. For many years, the Pickwa Fire Department's had contracts to provide fire and EMS service to both Spring Creek and Washington Township. The first item that I'm presenting is for Spring Creek Township, and the contract expires December 31st of this year, and we're looking to renew the service with them for a three-year period with a new contract before you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-108-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-109-19.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the trustees of, of Washington Township to furnish emergency ambulance service and fire protection.
Thank you. This is the same structure contract that we provided for Spring Creek. We do the same for Washington, and we provided the service over many years for that township as well. And we'd like to continue with approval for doing that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
I'm Dan French, 1127 North Sunset. As a business guy, I'm just curious as to how the previous contracts have worked out for the city. Did we go over and it cost the city a lot of money? Did we make a lot of money? How do you price a thing like this when you're going to send an unknown number of ambulances, an unknown number of fire trucks for three years? How do you go about doing that? And how's it turned out?
Yeah, just to answer your question, Dan, the previous contract was for 10 years. So with the three-year, we're doing a lot more study because it is a complicated process. We want to be fair to the townships, but we do want to undertake a very detailed study to determine what is the, what does it cost the city versus what does it cost to do the township? So we may be coming out really well, or we may not. So again, it's one of those situations right now where we need to provide the service until we get some answers to that, so.
Do we have a sense of how, how it worked out over the last 10 years? Did we lose our beep-beep, or did we make some money, or how did it work out?
No, I think we're, I think we're fine on it. I think we're probably close, so. We're, it didn't hurt us from a standpoint of operations, so.
Well, and certainly we want to support the neighbors, that I understand very clearly, but I'd like us to not have to suffer too hard for the privilege.
We have the same, yeah, that's the reason it's only a three-year contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Getting a 10-year allotment here, Joe Drapp back again. 120 South Main, I was wondering, is that the old lamppost? That whole series of buildings there? Okay. I was wondering, had we heard anything about the tax credits for the Zollinger project? Did they get approval on those monies? Do we know?
I don't think we've heard yet. The state hasn't made their announcement yet.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that's it. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Phil Chalkwell, 607 North Sunset Drive, Pickwa. I just have a couple of things that I want to talk about. I brought up the tax increase for the, you know, the $10 million or so for the streets that you guys put on the ballot last time. And I didn't comment on the streets. I didn't comment on the conditions of our streets. I didn't, I didn't complain about them. I didn't say they were good. I didn't say they were bad. And the question I had, which nobody answered, is, you know, Sydney is at 1.65 now for their, for their income tax. Troy is 1.75. Pickwa is at 2%. And, you know, we already take, you know, out of the first 1% of our income tax, roughly 28% of that already goes to streets, you know? So why do we need to add another 10 million over 10 years, or 15, whatever it may be? And the guy who, who came up here and was complaining about the streets being so bad, I'm like, well, why would you give somebody another $10 million if they didn't, if they couldn't do the job in the first place? So, you know, now, I really wasn't making a judgment on that, although I think the conversation is worthwhile. But I still think that you guys need to explain to people why, why does the city of Pickwa have to be at 2% rather than like Troy or, or Sydney, which is 1.65 and 1.75? The second thing I want to talk about tonight is, and I told you last time I was here, I've been concentrating on it, doing a, a study in economic development. And I actually have a nonprofit called the Pickwa Economic Development Council, and I haven't done a lot with that, but it sort of revolves around that. And what our research is starting to show is this, this last eight years is the slowest growth period in the, in the history of Pickwa. And you go back to 2018, we had four new housing permits, and that's a key economic indicator. And then there's other indicators, is the growth in your income. And then you start comparing these things to other cities, and then, you know, and I'm not, you know, I'd like to come up with a fair presentation, but I just don't know that you guys understand, you can out drive around some of these other communities, we are in one of the hugest, one of the largest growth periods in our, in American history. And I was in Dayton today, downtown Dayton all day, and I mean, just one building project after another. You know, we're a catering company, and, and over the last two weeks, I've been in, you know, I've been in 15, you know, Fortune 500 companies doing catering jobs, and these people are expanding their plants by, by half. It's, it's, it's stunning. And then you come to Pickwa and no growth. You know, and I just want to say about your, you know, all these projects that Chris is working on, you guys are working on the properties, just go back and read your economic development program. Read yours, then read Troy's. And then, and when I told you last week, why are, you know, why people in Pickwa make $6,000 a year less than people in Sydney and Troy? Read it. And don't blame Gary. Gary came here to do a job, and he's doing his job. You guys aren't doing your job. You need, you know, growth, incomes what the city needs. We lag behind everybody, and I, I like Dan French, but you heard, you heard what you get from Dan French. You know? When you heard me say, talking about the industry up in Wapak, 1,000 good-paying jobs, Dan followed that up with what he doesn't think Pickwa needs, 1,000 good-paying jobs. And that is the attitude the city has. It, 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 you just look at your own economic development programs, compare it to Troy. I mean, you guys are creating great jobs for people that make a $9 and $10 an hour. If you're a waitress, you know, I'm in the hospitality industry. We're the lowest-paid industry of all of them, manufacturing, construction, all of them. And why, why, you know, so, that's great, develop your restaurants and do all that. You know, just take, just take, for example, the million dollars a year you want for streets. You want to renew that. And I'm not picking on the library, but just say, for example, the $430,000 a year that, that comes out of our property taxes to support the library, just, just call that a million and a half dollars. Just imagine if every year you guys were spending a million and a half dollars on economic development, bringing good-paying jobs into the city. You know, read Troy's economic development report and read ours, and you will see the difference. I mean, it, it, it's not Gary's fault. He's done exactly what these two guys told him to do. You know, I mean, he's done to the T. It's not his fault. He'll do anything you tell him to do. Tell him to start bringing jobs to this town, start allocating the money for it. Let's, let's, let's do something different than we've done the eight last years. Let's, let's do something different than we've done the eight last years. Again, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I would respond that we will have some fact sheets coming out about the street, about the levy, so we'll have a lot of those questions answered real soon when we put those out, so.
Good.
Still Dan French, and I'm here to correct being misquoted in public. That is not what I said, what Bill Jock would just repeated. My point about a thousand jobs is, I've lived long enough that communities that have a single company with a thousand jobs that overwhelms all the other jobs in the community find themselves whipsawed terribly sometimes when that thousand-job company has to shrink or leave or do all the other things. I would much rather see Pickwa have ten companies with a hundred jobs. We would be much better off that way. And I spent a bunch of years as the chair of Grow Pickwa now. I think I spent six years trying to recruit companies to come to Pickwa, and we were successful to a small degree, much smaller than I wish we had. Part of the problem is that we don't have shovel-ready sites around the city, and some of the neighboring communities do. I mean, there's lots of reasons why we weren't as successful as I would like to have been, but I just want to correct, the last lie standing sometimes wins, and Bill misquoted me, and I want to correct that. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, sir.
Merry Christmas, Dan.
Bill Wilson, two eleven West Green. Want to thank Bill and John for all their years of service. I've seen them at a lot of meetings, and they've always come in prepared and spent the time to do a good job, and I really like the fact that you guys both are willing to vote your conscience, whether you're all by yourself or if you're all with everyone else. I like that, and wish you good luck, and stay out of trouble, Bill. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Anything else? Any other public comment? If not, we will move to the city manager's report.
Yes, a couple items. Just want to remind everyone, the city offices will be closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth and January the first. And then the first meeting in January, which is January the seventh, starts at seven thirty P M. as required by the city charter. It does require that one to be at seven thirty. You know, commissioners' vote and Martin, I think, are the only original commissioners left when they hired me back in two thousand eleven, and I want to publicly say that I'm very appreciative of them giving me the opportunity to work for the city of Pickwa, and I want to express my sincere gratitude for their confidence in me. So thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Commissioner Lee?
I want to thank Bill and John for their years of service and dedication to the city, and although Bill's heading to Florida, we'll be thinking about, thinking about him and wishing him well. And John, you're going to be around, and I may stop by and visit you a few times if you don't mind.
Not a problem.
I didn't think you would mind, so thank you for well-deserved, hard work, and you deserve a break, so thank you very much. I wanted to ask the city manager about, when will the economic development plan be revised? Do you know? It was in, last done in two thousand thirteen, right?
It's probably, yeah, it was done in...
So is it a ten-year thing, or?
No, no, no. We usually try to look at those at least every five years, so.
Okay.
It's coming up on, we'll have some discussion this year. It's next year.
All right, just so, and the reason I ask is that anybody wants any input in economic development, that would be the time to have input about what future projects, plans, opportunities that could come to the city. I think we've done a good job of fulfilling the last one with the downtown, the riverfront project. It's well underway, and a lot of, a lot of positive projects are heading towards that. I'm very, very, very happy with what's going on with that. Also, a question was asked to me by former mayor Hudson about the birds. He explained what's going on with the birds.
Well, in the downtown, of course, the Bradford pear trees, the pear trees have dense foliage, and for a couple of weeks throughout the year, when they start to move, they come into the trees and do their business.
And those aren't fruit-bearing trees? I mean, they're not attracted because of fruit or anything?
We have started, we did trim the trees this fall, and we've started washing, power washing for, they seem to gather, last for a short period of time, but it's one of those things we, just what happens with the type tree it is there.
All right, and the last question I have for you would be about the street signs. You said something about them being changed.
Yeah, we have a mixture of white and green, and I have spoken with our public works director, and his plan is to replace all the green ones with the white ones over the winter. So hopefully we'll have that done.
That sounds great. I want to wish everybody in the city of Pickwa, anybody who views this, and people in the audience, a Merry Christmas. Have a happy holiday. I want everybody to be safe and have a great New Year as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Grissom?
Just wanted to reiterate the same sentiments, John, Bill. Short time knowing you, thanks for welcoming me on to the council, and appreciate your help and support.
Hey, what's up? I'm Mike.
Sorry about that.
And again, happy holidays. I hope everybody's safe. Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner vote?
Well, this is it, the last one. Out sixteen years. I must say that I had some challenges. For the most part, I've enjoyed it. And the names that people call me, they just, I didn't pay any attention, okay? That happens, but that goes with the job. I took this job to get some things done. I got them done. I took this job to help the city, help my area, and I believe I have. And I've met a lot of wonderful people, a lot of kind people, and I sure appreciate it. And the upcoming commissioners, Oden, Cindy, hang in there. Pay attention, it won't be too bad. And with that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday and be safe, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I love you, Dad. Commissioner Martin?
Well, I have to have a question for this, so. Had a resident call me on city debt, and the city debt's been increasing, and in eighteen it was seventy-five million dollars. And I'm, I know why this is like this, but could we explain, so?
I'll ask our expert to share with you that.
Certainly. I don't have the figures right in front of me, but the two areas in which the city holds debt are both utility funds. The first one would be the water fund, and over the last two years, recall that the city opened the new water plant. So we invested heavily in that water plant by borrowing through the OWDA at zero to low interest rates. The second area is the wastewater, and we've been going through a three-year upgrade to our wastewater facility, and that's estimated to be completed early next year, again, with a very low percentage interest rate and zero interest, as well as some parts of the loan being forgiven. Both of those major infrastructure projects were required by the EPA in order to meet their compliance and maintain operating a water and a wastewater facility.
All right, thank you. Okay, it's been twelve years. I wouldn't say it's always been fun, but overall, I am really happy with where the city is now compared to when I started, and I'm proud of all the work we've accomplished. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
I'm really pleased with the transition that this commission has made in the last sixteen years with the amount of cooperation we've had among the commissioners. There's no, nobody, there's no gang here. We all work together, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't like Chris. What are you talking about?
I switched seats earlier.
Yeah, he did. He wanted to move.
There we go. All right, I also just want to say a big thanks to Bill and John for the many years that you have sat in these seats, and as John said, it's not easy sometimes, but we make the decisions that we do with the best, the best that we can, with the information that we have, and trying to make our city the best that it can be. But blessings to you all for what's next, and we thank you for all those years that you have been here. Also, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday and wonderful New Year. It's hard to believe we are just a few days away from Christmas, and New Year's is right behind it, so be safe and enjoy some time with family and friends. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? We are adjourned.